All right, hearing no further questions, thank you.
Thanks Nick, thanks Nick. Are there any public comments on this? Hearing seen none. Any further discussion by the, by the council?
So at this point, they're just getting the license, they don't have a building permit yet. And so they'll, they still have a building to build. It's an all indoor facility.
Looking at their security plan, it seems like there's quite a number of motion sensors and cameras, which I think is a good thing, and it seems like they're, they're taking it pretty serious.
Okay, any, any further discussion or?
Yeah, so this is a cultivation only facility. I guess it must be. So I guess the question is, this, so this is only a cultivation facility, so you're only growing it and drying it and, and selling it out to dispensaries?
That is correct.
Okay.
I guess in theory you could also send it over to a manufacturing facility somewhere else and have it manufactured. But one of those two, yep.
A processing facilities, yeah.
That's right.
And so, and so Freedom Farms is only cultivation, they don't have a dispensary that they own or any other type of license they're holding?
I believe that's correct at this point, not to say that they wouldn't apply for future licenses, but at this point.
So you're kind of looking at just local market for what you grow, or?
Um, what they, I presume they'll take any market that's available.
Okay. All right, that answers my questions.
Thank you.
Thanks Nick.
A question for State's Attorney, or Gary, what number of cultivation licenses are we at? Cause we authorized 10, do we, do we know where we're at? We obviously have some to spare, I was just. Three, okay, so there's plenty of, okay.
So we have plenty of licenses.
Plenty of rooms, so.
Any other questions or discussion by county officials?
No.
Hearing none and seeing none, I would approve motion to approve a cultivation facility license for Freedom Farms LLC.
I would move to approve the cultivation request for Freedom Farms LLC.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Dan, or Don, I'm sorry. To approve the cultivation facility for Freedom Farms LLC and any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a max bet retail malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license.
Hi, I'm Kristen Kozak and this is Lindsay.
Lindsay Leonard.
Hi, I'm Lindsay. It's kind of weird all of us. We're here to apply for our second malt beverage license for our casino, because the state requires two to have 20 machines.
Okay. The application has been filed.
Yep.
Do we have any?
Thank you.
Um, please not here, this, this will be on the next.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, title change for deputies. Sheriff Chrissy is not available, he is actually in peer training, doing training for juvenile detention, so. So we're going to postpone that item till our next meeting. And also the, the 10% jail building fund, we're going to postpone that also to our next, next meeting, because Preston is not available to, to be available to explain that. We have our weed board mosquito contracts. Jim?
Hello, I brought mosquito abatement contracts for this year for approval and signatures.
There's a lot of mosquitoes this year.
Oh, yeah. We've been busy already.
No, this is something we do each year, could you maybe explain to the public, you know, this is what we do and why we do it, so, because some new people might not understand this, we're spraying for the, the small towns, basically.
Basically, it's a, a health program to help prevent West Nile virus, or the spread of West Nile virus. We're kind of a hotspot in the whole country.
Really?
For that. So, so we're out fogging mosquitoes.
Yep, so these agreements are for, you know, to spray mosquitoes in the small towns, basically, so.
Basically, what they say is that they'll request fogging and we do it. And then they reimburse us at the end of the year.
I'd make a motion to approve the mosquito contracts.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Ryan, to approve the mosquito spraying contract with the state of South Dakota. Any further discussion? I have one item or, or one issue to talk about is, is when, how, how is this like the, the city is doing their spraying around, you know, the parks and, and that kind of stuff? So how does this affect the, the county?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean.
Well, does, does the state call you and say?
No, this has nothing to do with the state, this is a program strictly in Yankton County.
So, okay.
And it's just for the towns in Yankton County.
So, so when, when, how, how do you, how do we as a county determine what we're going to spray? The, the city sprays their, sprays their softball field, their parks, and everything else?
We used to do the city of Yankton.
Okay.
But it's a Class A city and we're a two-person department.
Right.
So when we did the city, we would cover the whole city. Occasionally, we, we'd do something for riverboat days or whatever around the parks. But some years back, I asked them to take care of their own, because they have the resources. So now we do just the small towns, we do the whole town. If they request spraying, so if they have an event going on, we do the whole town.
Okay, that, that answered my question, like, like when Tabor has their celebration, if they request us to come out and spray, we're going to spray.
If, if they were in Yankton County, yes.
Well, yeah, Tabor's not, you, you got it.
But yeah, we do the, we do the whole town, we don't do a small area, so.
I got it.
And we're, it's a, this year it's going to be kind of a weekly thing, so.
Sure, yep, nope, I, I got you. Thanks Jim.
You bet.
Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda for this evening is to approve the June 6, 2024 meeting minutes.
I'd move a-
I'd move to approve the June 6, 2024 meeting minute.
The, the only correction I'd like to make is on action 2, 24177C, where I abstained, and the reason I, I did is because I was on the phone and I didn't have the canvas in front of me, so. If I could just reflect that, I wasn't abstaining anything with the vote, it's just I didn't have the document in front of me, so that's why I did that. But I would second Wanda's motion to approve with that correction.
Okay, I have a, a motion by Wanda, second by Dan, to approve the, the June 6 meetings with the, with the amended objection, or obvious statement, so. I got a second, or a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Second, or opposed, same sign, motion carries. CMC Adventures Rezone, Gary?
Too early yet.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, do you want to go to the ambulance?
So, can we do the plat?
We can move on the plane.
Can we do the plat?
We can do the one K and shop plat if you want.
Okay, let's see, let's-
That one goes with the rezone, so.
Let's, let's do the plat.
Okay, this, this is a replat of Lot 2 and 3, Block 3, Zedeker's subdivision, in the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter, and in the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter. Section 8, Township 93 North, Range 57 West of the 5th Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota, hereafter to be known as Platte of Track 1 of Kinnick's Shop Edition.
Gary, are they just taking?
They're just tying their two lots together for a future building that, so they have a little more space to work with.
Okay. And give, and, and, we don't have the, the map up here, but where's that at?
It's out by the lake, basically is, what is it, Ziskoff Township, out by Lakeport.
Okay.
Yep. I'd move approval of the plat.
Second.
Okay, I got a, a, or a motion by Dan, second by Ryan, to approve the plat. Further discussion? Hearing none, all approved, say?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Thank you.
Do you want to?
You want to do claims first? Um, let's, let's move on to claims. Can I get a motion to approve claims?
Oh, quite, I had a question, uh, for the Department of Revenue, the, the beverage license, the $150, are we paying that into the state, or for the non-departmental?
Yes.
Okay.
It's 300 and we get 150, the state gets 100.
Okay. Got it. But we get all the, all the police and sheriff calls and ambulance calls, so. I'd, I'd move approval of the claims.
I have a motion by Dan. Can I get a second on the claims?
Somebody?
Second.
No.
Second by Don. Further discussion on the claims? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Juvenile detention was down, it was only $3,600.
What was that, only 3,000?
That's a good month. We haven't had a month like that in years, have we?
Six days.
I don't think that number's correct. And, and they may, the bill may not have came in.
Oh, well. There you go, shattering my hope.
I know. I'll, I'll, I would almost assume that it's going to be-
It's usually 10 times that, or 20 times that.
Yes, yes.
Amount, so, wow.
Now the second set of claims?
Yep. I'd make a motion to approve the claims part two.
Second.
So I have a, a motion by Dan, second by Ryan, to approve the second set of claims. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Our May 2024 Auditor Treasurer Report? And pool, and pooled cash.
I'd move to approve the May Auditor Treasurer Report and pooled cash.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan, to approve the May 2024 Auditor Treasurer Report and pooled cash. Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Let's move back up to the ambulance service discussion. This is, this is, this is going to be considered a public comment to discuss what our public and constituents in Yankton County have to tell us what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong with our ambulance service. Pauline, you are more than welcome to step up to the podium and state your name.
Hi, Pauline Ackland. So, I understand that we did a survey or, or had a consultant come in and analyze. My question is, did they analyze the billing? Because I have a concern about the billing, and I'll pass these down to you. My husband had the honor of riding in the ambulance in August of last year. Now, it's my understanding that Medicare, you have 180 days to do the billing for them. Well, that's six months. It didn't get billed. That's $2,656 that you didn't get, because it didn't get billed to Medicare. So my question is, how many times has that happened in Yankton County in our billing? If it happened once, I can guarantee you that it's happened several times, if not many more. If it happened 10 times, that's $26,000 that you didn't get, because we're not going to pay it. And Medicare didn't get billeded in time, so you're not getting any money. So that's the first thing that has to be addressed with, in, in my, you know, viewpoint, that's the first thing that has to be addressed in taking care of your, your ambulance and EMS, is you need to get your billing figured out. Because I have talked to other people, and they've had this exact same report sent to them from Medicare, that it's, it's declined because, denied because it wasn't billed in the proper billing time. And when you have six months to bill it, there's no reason for that to not get billed. So I don't know how your billing works, but that needs to be the, the first cog in the wheel that needs to be oiled and figured out. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, to address that, we, we did have a third-party billing company that wasn't, wasn't doing a very good job, and I think that would have covered this timeframe, and so, well, the, and so billing has gone back in-house. Four years ago, when we did the ambulance study, the recommendation was to outsource the ambulance billing. And then now this study recommends bringing it back in-house. But the fact doesn't change that even if we were paid, it'd be 30 cents on the dollar, roughly. What would, correct me then, what, what would it, what would it be, so, for Medicaid reimbursement?
So you lose about 25%.
Okay, so, uh, we're still losing money, even if it would get paid, so. But I believe Court Eric Wright, do you want to address the, what we've done with the billing? Yeah. We got the expert, expert here.
Thank you for the question and for the opportunity to address your discussion as the ambulance service and where it's currently stayed. So you are correct, it didn't get billed because we had fired the third-party billing company the 1st of July, and we had to set up the entire process to bring billing back in-house. We know that there's some money lost, but the third-party billing company also wrote off several hundred thousand dollars, which we had a meeting with John and, and Rob and stuff, and we realized that that was going to happen, and we're currently working on that process. So our live bill date actually started January 1st. And they had those 180 days to go back, but as, our billing department is getting resourced to an entirely new platform, and as we're still bringing on a couple of those components, we know that we missed out on those. Moving forward, that should be addressed and should not happen again. To the rest of the strategic planning, as you start to continue to look forward. A couple of months ago, or a month ago, I reported that currently the numbers were showing 38% on the dollar. However, I'd like to recommend you come over and visit with our billing department to see how the billing works, because it's not, it's not a just, there's a laser beam and that's where it's at, it's constantly moving, and they're constantly back billing some of those things, because when you submit a claim, sometimes it gets rejected, they have to go through, correct a couple of things within the billing process for right codes and stuff, and then they resubmit. So that it's ever-changing. I pulled numbers as of yesterday morning. So from January 1st up until yesterday, currently we had billed for $787,800, just to make it simplistic. The insurance write-offs were roughly $260,000, and we still have about $263 pending. The payments were $264,357. While our payments plus the pending would take us to about $527,638.60. And that's only 30 calls in June, that's not even six months' worth of billing. So if you double that number, you're roughly just over a million dollars. Well, our budget's running 1.3 to 1.4 million dollars. So it's not like your ambulance service here is costing you 1.4 million dollars out the door, period. There's a window in there. Now, when you look at it, the tax dollars within Yankton County are to provide services. I don't know any department that generates a whole lot of revenue. And I understand we're not considered an essential service, but I think if you had asked the constituents of the city of Yankton and Yankton County, what it would look like without an ambulance, it would become an issue. To our discussion prior to the meeting, I talked to Brian Hembeck, who's the ambulance director for Spearfish Ambulance. Brian and I have been good friends for a lot of years, and I brought up the proposal that I had heard from last week's meeting. He laughed when I said that there was a consideration of taking it to a volunteer service. He said bringing in a third pri, a third party isn't going to work, because they've already turned it down before. And you're not going to get the level of service that you want. They run currently about 2,800 calls a year, which is about 500 more than us. Their budget is about $800,000 more than ours. And I understand that they're, they're billing department. We've not been afforded the opportunity to really get our billing department into place and bill for one consecutive year yet, which would hopefully put us in the mark of, I'm, I'm hoping better than 90% of our budget, which would really cut our overall budget down to about a million dollars. We'd offset those expenses, so you'd be providing a service for $400,000. If we can get it up to 97, 98%, I'm not sure why we would want to change that, without affecting the constituents of Yankton County. They still get a stipend from the city of Spearfish. You need to take into consideration, if you bring in a third-party biller, I would challenge you to go visit with the other couple of communities off the record. There's a couple of communities, the volunteer services are help covering their community, because they're all busy running transfers, because that's where the money's at. They're not even fulfilling their obligation to the community. So that would be, I would be a little hesitant to push anybody to go that direction. So I'd be curious to know, if you guys really have questions on how the billing works, come, come sit down and visit with our billing ladies a little bit. Happy to run numbers at any point in time, but truly hoping that we're going to see, and I would just ask for a little window of opportunity, because I've been here less than a year. As I talked to John the other day, I think this time next year, you're going to have a really good idea of where we're currently at, because we'd have a full year of actual billing practice that we can tie numbers to. And I don't think that the loss is necessarily going to be what you expect. But we're not an agency that is taking 1.4 million dollars and just expending it out in the community. We're returning it with our billing, so it's not, we're just utilizing it, it's going away. And with inflation, we understand that some of those supplies and stuff are going up. But I would say historically, and I would have to get a report from Patty to prove this, but historically, we don't utilize the entirety of our budget, and we have a tendency to turn money back in. So we try to be very judicial with the funds and the tax dollars that are collected within the Yankton County.
Thanks for your, your response to that question that Pauline brought up. Are, are there any other questions from the public at this point in time? Hearing seen none, I-
Eric, do you think we could get a presentation on the billing at some point when the staff is comfortable?
Absolutely.
I think that would be good for transparency in the public to see, and I think you hit on an important point, is what we're looking at is the, the gap between what we budget and the return for services, and keeping that gap as narrow as we can, and, you know, that's, that's an opportunity of where, you know, partnering with the city could help out, and, you know, that would be something that, that we should look at, asking them for something to budget this year as well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
For full transparency, I have blatantly told the entire council before that ambulance services are not designed to make money. I, I truly understand that, however, if we can narrow that gap and get it as close as we possibly can, then we're doing our job.
So I specifically wanted this, this moment to be, and, and an opportunity for public to stand up and, and ask questions. But I see Troy walking up to the microphone, so we're going to give him an opportunity to speak also.
I just wanted to say that I, you know, I concur with Eric, you know, there's been a lot of ideas that have been thrown around to do with the ambulance service. The one thing that, that I want you guys to keep in mind is that, between Eric and I, just the two of us together, we have 52 years of experience in EMS in South Dakota. There's a lot of experience there, I've been with the ambulance service here in Yankton for 31 years, and I was a volunteer when I first started, and I know what that's like. And there's just, there's no way that we could go back to a volunteer service, it just won't work in a community this size with the call volume that we have. That's an option that really shouldn't be on the table, but, and, and we're seeing the spirit of volunteerism that's really changing. You know, 20 or 25 years ago, it was okay to be a volunteer and, and, you know, volunteer for call time with the ambulance, but we're not seeing that anymore. In the last, in the last four years, we've hosted three EMT classes here in Yankton. And out of the 50 students that we've run through those EMT classes, we only have about five on our roster right now. So we're not picking up the volunteers or the part-time employees out of those EMT classes. We're, we're kind of, we seem to be inching closer and closer to a full-time, more of a full-time service, and if we want to get all these shifts covered that we need to cover. So I, I guess I feel that, you know, with the, with the options that you guys have been looking at and, and the decisions that, that are on the table, I just would like to remind you that Eric and I are perfectly willing to be more involved in this process, and you guys are always welcome to, to come to us with questions, and, and we'll give you the best feedback that we can.
Something I would like to see is a, a big sheet of all the Class 1 municipalities and, and communities a similar size, and how they're actually funded. I know I've gotten a list where they're, they say they're fire-based, but what that really means is that they're under a city fire department that the city funds. And, and so if we could have a breakdown of how that's actually done, you know, if it's fire-based under a fire district, that's different than it being fire-based and being provided by the municipality. And then see the details of how many are actually county-funded, I think it's a, a very small number. But a breakdown, similar-sized communities definitely include all the Class 1 municipalities, and then the other counties, roughly, like Lawrence County is similar in size to us. I, I guess I'd like to see that with the details on how the funding is, and then if we could get what approximately they're spending. For example, Mitchell is fire-based, but under the city of Mitchell, what's their gap? And what's acceptable? Are, are they running at a $200,000 loss a year? Because none of these are making money, and that's a, a good point that you make. I think we could make better decisions that way, because the list that I know we got, and that went to the other city people, is that's fire-based, like I said, but that's not exactly true. It's under the fire department, yes, but paid for by the municipalities, so. That's something I'd like to see.
So, so, so Gary, is that something that alternative HR could provide us with?
Probably not.
Okay, okay, okay.
Well, it's- I, I do have some of that information here tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, if we could-
Because this is something that I looked up before I came in here tonight.
Sure, no, that'd be great.
In, in South Dakota, a Class 1 municipality is a population of over 5,000 people. There's 18 Class 1 municipalities in the state of South Dakota. Five of those departments are, five of those ambulances are fire department-based. They are run by the fire department or, or in conjunction with the fire department.
Is that a fire district, or this municipal city?
Municipal, it's municipal fire departments.
So five of-
That's Aberdeen, Mitchell, Rapid City, Vermillion, and Watertown. Four of the municipalities have a privately-owned ambulance, that's Brandon. Pier is Ameri, is AMR. Sioux Falls has Patient Care EMS, and Sturgis is a private ambulance service. Three of them are community-based, meaning that the community itself pays for them. I don't know exactly what their funding is, if it's just through tax base, but Huron, Madison, and Spearfish are all community-based. Two are government, that's us, with county government, and then Belle Fouches. Two are government, that's us, with county government, and then Belle Fouch is also listed as government-funded. One is hospital-based, that is up in Brookings. They run out of their hospital up there. And then the remaining three municipalities don't have an independent ambulance service. That's T. and Harrisburg, which are on the outskirts of Sioux Falls, and Box Elder, which is on the outskirts of Rapid City. So that's what the Class I municipalities look like in South Dakota. There's, there are no Class I municipalities that have an ambulance tax district. Matter of fact, of the seven tax districts, there are eight towns in South Dakota that are running their ambulances through tax districts, like what you guys have been proposing. The total population for those eight towns is less than 6,000 people. Putting that into numbers, that means that less than 1% of the population of South Dakota is served by an ambulance district, and there are no Class I municipalities that have an ambulance district.
How many of the larger counties, like the top 10 counties, solely fund the ambulance? The answer would be us, though. I mean, there's no, there's no, from what I know, and you guys might know different, there's no county our size that is the sole supporter of an ambulance.
Not necessarily the county, but what you have to look at is there's 124 ambulance services in South Dakota. 85 of them are either community, nonprofit, government, non-fire, like our category, or fire department, which is also tax-based. That means that 69% of the ambulance services in South Dakota have at least some taxpayer-based payments.
And I agree with you, but this is where we get into the weeds because we don't have anywhere near the funding that a municipality has. We don't have sales tax. We are solely based on property tax, and so we don't, we don't have the sales tax like some of those other communities are. So I think there is a difference, and I really appreciate this. This is great information. If you could email me that out.
Absolutely.
It's what the community conversation needs to be about, so thank you.
If I may, one thing to add, is you consider the municipality side of it. So Sean Fisher, who's the director for Sturgis Ambulance, they run under the fire department. They're not a community-based, they're fire-based. The city owns them. They can't leave the city to answer calls into the county. Mitchell was like that for a while, too. So if you want to go that route, the city of Yankton could put the same stipulation on the ambulance service here, leaving the rest of the county uncovered, which means you're still going to have to find a way to provide an ambulance to cover the rest of the county.
But I don't, I don't understand. What did you, like, I don't think anybody's looking at a situation like that. I think we're all looking to how to make this work for our whole community. I guess that's where I'm coming from, and how do we?
Understand.
We've got to have some, yeah, some conversation about how these are based and how they're ultimately paid for.
If you can find a partnership between the two, completely understand, but if you're looking to get rid of the ambulance service to make it a municipality, I'm just playing the devil's advocate of how that could look. That's all I'm doing.
Is, are you trying to, I have a question. Are you trying to change things so that you add a tax to the Yankton County residents for ambulance? Is that what we're trying to do?
We're not trying to do anything at this point in time. We're trying to figure out a way so that we can continue to provide the service that we have in the past to the constituents of Yankton County.
Exactly.
At the same level that we have been doing that, but the issue that we're dealing with at the county level right now is, is that the, just providing the ambulance service is generating, I don't want to say this incorrectly, but I may, is generating a cost inefficiency to the county. So what I'm saying is, is we need to figure out a way that we can continue to do, we could continue to provide the services that our ambulance service has provided in the past, to continue that service. Now, financially-wise, the county at this point is looking for a direction from the constituents. If that is to increase the tax so that we can, we can run the ambulance service as a tax district, just like a lot of our small towns are running their fire departments in a tax district, if that's what we need to do, or if our constituents want to run our ambulance service as is and possibly, I don't have all the answers at this point in time.
But how long did you have the third-party billing that you fired in July?
We ran the third-party billing company.
How many years?
I have, I don't, I don't know.
We did that in 2020.
Hired them in 2020.
So in 20, so from 2020 till now, or till July of last year, when you let them go, you were losing money?
We were losing money before, and the recommendation in 2020 is. Well, we were, and the recommendation from the ambulance task force in 2020 was to go to a third-party building because we were losing too much money.
But I think you need to give this new billing service, like he said, you know, Eric, right? You need to give Eric a chance to, you know, like he said, you know, we don't have a full year, so we don't know what that is. You know, you need to, you need to have that full year of data before you make any changes.
I tend to agree with you there, but, but our situation as a county service, and our community is growing in age-wise, and.
I know, I'm there.
And if, and if, and if we, if 92% of our calls are within the city limits, and I don't know what the percentage, but it's a greater number than that that is Medicare, Medicaid patients, and we are receiving 34% of the actual bill, 30, correct me if I'm wrong, is Medicare, Medicaid is going to give us?
You lose 25%, so you're getting about 75%.
Right.
But that's no different than your clinics, your doctors, everybody else. They get the same, they get the same thing.
But we're based on property taxes, okay? Our property tax increased by 3% or CPI, whichever is less, and I guarantee you the cost of medicine, everything else is going up higher than 3%. The easiest thing in the world for us to do would be kick up our feet and say, "We don't need to worry about the ambulance," but the number of people using the service keeps continuing and getting more and more, and if something isn't done, there's going to come a day where our ambulance service is taking a bigger and bigger and bigger portion of the tax dollars. We have to fund a jail. We have to fund a state's attorney. We have to prosecute criminals, and then we have to defend them. We've got to run a sheriff's office. We, on average, what, 87% of the county budget is mandated by law. We're talking about a sliver of the funding that, you know, we have a choice, and more and more of that is getting taken up by the service. And so what do we do? The easy answer is to do nothing, and that's what's happened for the last 20 years. And so I think it's important we have this conversation and see, and again, there's a reason that no county our size is solely based, solely runs an ambulance because they've all gone bankrupt doing it.
But you also fired that third-party billing in July, and there was how many claims? I mean, I'd like to know how many claims there were from July till the end of the year that didn't get paid because mine was one, ours was one of them.
If we get, if we're only collecting pennies on the, you know, every call we do, we lose money on. That's a good way to say it. So the more calls.
But if you're not getting anything because it didn't get billed.
Okay, but, and we keep doing more and more calls every year, right? So every call we go on, we lose money, and we're doing more and more calls, we're losing more and more money. And I think, yes, you're exactly right. We need to look at the billing, but billing is not the answer if you continue to lose money on every call you go on.
Yeah.
Is it? I mean, it's, so we're looking at something that's long-term and sustainable for our whole community. We want a top-notch ambulance service, a partnership with everybody.
I think one of the big points and takeaways you have to point out, we have to point out, and we have to be honest about, is exactly what Eric said. An ambulance service is not going to make money.
Right.
It isn't designed to make money. It isn't, it's a service. And so our big goal is to make sure that we are keeping it where the county can keep it up, because I don't think, unlike, like, I know you talk, we have so many mandated things, but I don't think it's okay for Yankton County to be without an ambulance service.
And nobody's, nobody's saying that. I think we need an ambulance service.
And like, if we need to make any big changes, and that's going to be a, if we make any big change, you know, that's my big concern, is how do you maintain that service through any big change? That we are maintaining that service because I, Eric said that you don't think it's a, might not be called an essential service, but I think an ambulance service is an essential service.
I think it is, and what we've seen, too, is that our pay, I don't think is competitive even now to maintain these people. I think ambulance has, we probably, you guys have our highest turnover as far as employees because, you know, I don't think the pay is as good as it should be. And are we going to be able to afford what these guys are actually worth? I don't think so, not by ourselves, not in the current makeup that we have.
I think you're going to find that struggle in just about every category.
Yeah.
I mean, every business out there is struggling with that as well.
Well, and it goes down to, you know, why, why are you going to work in an ambulance service when you can make, make more somewhere else? Because it's a stressful job, what these guys have to do each and every day. So, good conversation.
And I think that's what tonight, tonight's meeting was, and I appreciate Pauline coming up to the mic and speaking. I wish there would have been more people that came up and give us their ideas. We're not, we're not here right at this moment to say we're not going to, we're not going to have an ambulance service. It was just, it's a conversation piece that I think that, I think that we need to have.
Mr. Chair, I'd propose, let's leave this on for, like, at least the next month. This is, we've had great conversations. This is what we need. We need feedback from the community on what they want to, want to see, and realize if nothing changes, it's going to be coming out of property taxes.
Sure. Sure. And, and, and we can, as we get down to the, to the bottom, towards, towards the bottom of the agenda, we'll just put that on, on the, continue, continue the conversation and further, further agendas, so. At this point, we'll close public comments for, on this discussion, and, did we skip anything?
Number 10.
Number 10.
Back to the rezone?
Yes, okay. CMC Adventures LLC, rezone.
This is second reading. Applicant is requesting a rezone of parcel dual zone moderate density rural residential district and rural transitional district to moderate density rural residential district. Said property is legally described as Lot 1 of Ranch 1, Ranch Estates in the west half of Section 4, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the 5th Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota, U-911. Address is 30938, 436th Avenue, and the applicant's are in attendance if there are any questions.
Pretty straightforward.
We need public comments on this?
Yes.
Are there any public comments on this, this plat by CMC?
No, rezone.
Or the rezone, I'm sorry. Any public comments here at this point in time? Seeing none? Closed public comments?
Move approval of the rezone request.
Have a motion by Dan, second by Wanda. Any further discussion?
No, I think this is a really great idea of, you know, doing this, so I wish you guys best of luck.
I think this area along 314 seems to be a bit of a hotbed for these developments.
It's nice that it's close to town, but yet people feel like it's a little more rural.
It gets good access for roads, it gets good.
Right.
And hopefully we, hopefully we get.
Infrastructure's pretty much already almost all done, so.
So, and it's an area where if they ever need sewer, it's not going to be expensive, so, like the lake area. So I don't know, it's, this is a good area for having these developments.
Yep.
Excellent.
Well said.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Good luck to you guys.
Thanks for coming.
And now we have the plat for that rezone, replat of lots 1, 2, and 3 of Ranch 1, Ranch Estates in the west half of Section 4, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the 5th Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota, hereafter to be known as lots 4 through 10 of Ranch 1, Ranch Estates in the west half of Section 4, Township 93 North, Range 56 West of the 5th Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. So we're gaining four lots in the deal, too.
Any further discussion or motion?
Move approval.
Have a motion by Ryan.
Second.
Second by Don. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd just like to take a moment and just say thank you to our zoning administrator, Gary. He's really been out, you know, making these processes easier to bring it in, so thank you, Gary. You know, we're making progress on housing. Maybe it's not as quick as the city, but still, still getting it done.
I did know that, and appreciate Gary, everything you've done. Moving forward, I think we're up to commission updates. Ryan, you got anything new?
I don't have anything to report to this week.
Wanda, you got anything to tell us?
Not pertinent today.
Dan?
The Property Tax Committee for the state met, want to say on Monday. Haven't heard a lot of word about what their discussion, but then also we've got our eight county meeting coming up on Thursday. If you guys can attend, it's going to be in Freeman, and then, you know, kind of just keep Turner County in our thoughts. I know they're having a lot of problems with their courthouse pouring water in, so.
The county meeting is this Thursday?
Correct, this Thursday in Freeman, yep, so.
Don, commission updates.
Don's got a lot.
He's got papers.
I got pages here. We're doing so darn good, it's thick. No, this is a, from the government office, economic development. Our board that I sit on, on a monthly basis, they pass out some interesting statistics, and I'd like to share them with you. A recent study by Wallet Hub released a study on state economics where South Dakota ranked, again, best in economic health. This ranking considers factors like unemployment, labor force growth, personal income growth, and growth in the number of businesses. In the updated ALAC Lafler Economic Competitive Index, South Dakota ranked seventh best in economic outlook. This ranking is based on 15 state policy variables, including tax rates, the number of government employees, and whether the state has a right-to-work policy. Under the general economy, looking at South Dakota's bottom line, 11 months of the fiscal year 2024, general fund data shows, shown, ongoing general fund receipts are $120 million higher than they were at this point last year, reflecting a growth rate in 5.7%. This surpasses the legislative. legislative adopted estimate of 1.3%.
You've gotta wonder where all that money gone.
We have, we have.
South Dakota's April business in, conditions index value was 61.4, indicating increased optimism about short-term economic growth compared to the prior month. Our state's index values remains the highest in the region in contrast to the U.S. and mid-American values of 42.2, 49.2, and 52.5 respectively. Labor market, South Dakota's unemployment rate remains historically low at 2%, currently tied for the lowest rate among the states. This aligns with other labor measures. It's South Dakota boasts the fourth highest employment-population ratio, which is really, in my opinion, important, more important, and the sixth highest labor force participation rate in the country. And then, one item under housing that, regarding housing costs, Realtor.com lists South Dakota's current median price per square foot at $215, which is 8% more than, more affordable than the national average. In terms of housing listings per capita, South Dakota is on par with the national average. Additionally, our listing prices are very stable, with 77% of the listings showing no price changes from the previous month, making the sixth highest rate of listing price stability in the country. And there's a few other things, but I'll let those go. The, the states, the state is doing pretty well, and we're part of that state, and, and we just gotta keep pushing.
Thanks, Dan.
You know, and, and Donna, appreciate you bringing that information to us, because, like you say, the state is, South Dakota is a great place to live. And it's a great place to be involved in with, with economic development and, and other situations. So, so I just wanna say, I'm, I'm grateful to live in, in the state of South Dakota, and, and I appreciate what everybody's doing in the, in the legislature and everything else, so... And, and Don, you bring that stuff, information to us on a monthly basis, and appreciate that. So, at this point, I would entertain a, a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Ryan, to move into executive session.
Aye.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Wanda, you wanna call me on my cellphone?